All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to our August 3rd Commissioner meeting. At this time, Commissioner Williams is going to lead us in a prayer and Commissioner Newton with the pledge, so please stand.
Please bow your head. I have the Father come to you today thankful for the statement you made for us. Please guide us and get us through the storm and help people make good decisions and be safe and don't do things that put yourself in harm's way if at all possible. And if this thing will come in here quickly and leave quickly and just leave us alone this year. Please guide and direct everybody in this meeting so that we do say thank in the best interest for this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
This flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, with everything that's happening today with the storm coming in tonight, we're going to try to get through this agenda as quickly as possible. We're actually going to make some changes. So at this point, we're going to, Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to table under public information, item 5.2 and 5.3.
Yes, sir.
Under consent agenda, we're going to table item 7.15.
Okay.
All right? And then we're going to table item under approvals and resolutions, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.5.
Yes, sir.
Under appointments, we're going to table item 9.1 and 9.2.
Yes, sir.
All right? With that being said, if we could get a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve with those amendments.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Okay. We're at the item under public information. We are going to take care of the first item, 5.1, approval of an appointment of a voting delegate for the 2020 NCACC Annual Conference. Now, unless we have a, have a number of folks up here that want to be that voting delegate, Commissioner Newton has agreed, has agreed to do this.
I want to know who else wants to be because I'll be happy, sir.
Okay, and this has to happen today. This can't wait, so would that be?
Make a motion. Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Newton, for being willing to do that. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comment. Do we have some signups? How many do we have?
Donald Sullivan.
Okay, we're going to have to limit this to two minutes. Can we get it done in two minutes, Mr. Sullivan?
What's up, y'all? Although that's a pretty big book. What's your hell of a book? About the same author. He didn't put a date on it, but it's 2004.
Thank you.
You're going to either reinforce what you already know or you're going to learn some more good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And there will be no test.
Thank you. Appreciate that, too.
By kind of course. We get tested every day.
Even Donald Sullivan from Atkinson, retired Lieutenant Colonel, Air Force. I'm here to say I haven't received answers to my two questions yet from...
And, Mr. Sullivan, that is, that's my fault. I got a draft court and then got busy with some other things, some personal stuff. That's totally on me. And I apologize to you and the board. I will get it out this week.
Good. And secondly...
My apologies.
Appreciate it. Accepted. Is there any discussion about having a hospital on the east side with the money that's coming from, possibly from the sale of New Hanover Regional Medical Center that we should get part of in Pender County?
The Hanover Regional Medical Center is putting in for a certificate of need to build one in northern New Hanover County in Scottsdale, build a hospital there.
In New Hanover County?
Right the line, Scottsdale.
Why don't we build it in Pender County?
Doesn't matter what side the line is on, but it's a certificate of need would be for New Hanover County, but just like the ED North is, everybody in eastern Pender benefits from ED North.
Well, anyway, I thought I'd be the first one on the block to say that I've got some land in Pender County on the east side, next to the proposed interstate, right by the interchange at Hoover Road, and I'd be glad to donate 25 acres, if that's enough, to the county to build that hospital. And I only ask that you name it after my wife. I'll give you all the points I can get.
That's a nice gesture.
That's Marion P. Sullivan. All right?
Thank you.
Any questions?
But we thank you.
Is that quick enough?
That's quick enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And be careful.
I shall.
Stay safe. Okay. Next, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, and unless you've got an item you won't pull after we've already pulled, 7.15.
Make a motion in front of the Pender County.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Okay, approvals and resolutions. Item 8.1 is a proclamation of the Gulaguchi Nation Appreciation Week. Now, we go through this every year, and Queen Quit was supposed to be here today, but we asked could we delay that for her to be here until when we had a better opportunity, because but for now, if everyone's read the proclamation, I'm not going to take the time to read it, but we're going to go ahead and dispose of the proclamation so they can move ahead with their needs.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. All right, next item, 8.4, approval of a purchase order to Hatachi Capital America Corporation in the amount of $98,222,04 for the annual lease payments of the E-911 telephone system. Sheriff, I didn't see you back there. How are you doing? A mask. I didn't recognize you with the mask on.
Good afternoon. How's everybody?
How you doing, Sheriff?
That star on your shirt did kind of let me know something, but I...
Yes, sir. This is just the annual lease agreement for the E-911 telephone system. Just keep that 911 system going.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions?
It's been budgeted. I see it said been budgeted for everything, okay. That's fine.
All right. We entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve it. Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I haven't even been in over yet, Sheriff.
Okay, item 8.6, offer to purchase real property expedited hazard mitigation grant program. Mr. Henley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
I'm sure some folks ready to see this.
I hope so. Thank you for allowing this to stay on the agenda for tonight. The first item we have is an actual offer to purchase real property through the expedited acquisition program for Hurricane Florence. I apologize that it's just one property. This is the first one that was ready, and it's the only one we had to make the agenda deadline. And conversations with Trey, I did want to ask the board in the past, and in my conversations with Trey, in my conversations with Kyle, the board has wanted to see the just compensation establishment and then see it come back for the actual offer. Since this program is on a time crunch, right now the deadline is still the middle of September. We're hopeful for an extension, but we don't have any word exactly yet. If it would be okay with the board that we just move forward with these acquisitions, that the board has already seen and established just compensation, that would help us meet the deadlines a lot faster. But in the way it's worked in the past, the board has wanted to see it twice, so...
Does anyone have any comments on that?
Just thank Travis for a job well done.
Mostly Dan.
Especially if it's, if this is going to hold up the process, these folks don't need to be held up anymore and absolutely have to. If you see, see something strange, just let us know. All right?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say, if it's okay with you, because I mean, they're pretty formulaic at this point, and you've already seen it with the just compensation. So if it's okay that Travis and I, if we have a question or there's a concern, we bring it back to you. Otherwise, we process it. And again, we're hopeful, as he said, that we get an extension, but that's no guarantee. So we need to try to move them as quick as we can.
I made a motion.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor? It's approved. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Now, that was actually approved in item 8.6.
Yes.
Okay, we just needed a nod on the other one, and it sounds like we've got it. Okay, 8.7, Hurricane Florence mitigation grant program expedited acquisition project.
Yeah, so same program. This was a straggler in establishing just compensation. There were some hangups with the appraisal, and so it's just the very last one, just to establish just compensation for us to move forward with actually making an offer.
All right. Any questions? How about a motion?
Make a motion, approve it. Second.
You got a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. All right, and you're still up to bat with 8.8? Go ahead.
Am I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My fault. This is Mr. McEwen. You all do look a little different, don't you?
I'll let him take that.
Approval of a contract amendment for interim emergency management director Carson Smith. All right.
I'll take that as a compliment.
There you go. Go ahead. That's the way it was meant, Mr. Manager.
This is a request to approve an extension for Carson Smith's contract as contract emergency management director. He would run, extend under the same terms through March 24th, 2021.
I should do approve.
It doesn't get better than that. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Okay, looks like we're jumping on. We don't need to open this Pender County Board of Health or Social Services.
Social Services.
Oh, we do?
He's got that plan at 11:01. He tied behind a mask. It's got to be approved.
I'm sorry, I tried, guys.
I'll make it quick. So every year we have to come and get approval for the plan for the energy outreach that we do, which involves crisis intervention program, low-income energy assistance, other special programs for helping folks out with heating, electrical bills, those kinds of things. So I'm seeking your approval for that outreach plan.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, before we vote, if you would gabble us in into Social Services.
Okay, we are now the Board of Social Services. Okay, anyone have any questions from Mr. Stewart?
No, sir.
All right. We'll, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, before you get away, can you give us a brief update on the status of this morning's fire?
Sure. So we had one of the exhaust fans in one of the bathrooms on the west end seized and started a small electrical fire, got some insulation, charged some of the rafters. Not a whole lot of damage, other than one of the bathrooms is kind of inoperable at the time, but other than that, other than some cleanup, we're good.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, it could have been a lot worse.
So we'll be back up, you know, barring, you know, the tropical event, we'll be back up and running?
We didn't close.
You didn't close, yeah?
We worked all day today.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're at that time. Anderson County Attorney?
I was told we weren't to do in closed session.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to hear.
Let everybody get out of here.
I was going to give you the opportunity to speak, but...
That.
All right, County Manager?
The only thing I have is I introduced Ben Baudet to, to a couple of you as you walked in. Ben is the new Assistant Facility Director.
How you doing?
His first week was last week, middle of the week, Ben?
It was Monday of last week.
Monday of last week. So we, I guess, introduced him pretty quickly to everything.
Sorry to hear about Alan's father.
Yeah, he's, Alan's having to deal with some family matters, and Ben and Dan are stepping up to fill that void, so.
So he's getting baptized this week, isn't he?
Baptized by fire, that's right.
All right. Welcome.
We did have some people come in late that may not have heard that a lot of the items weren't going to get addressed because of the media. I just, we may want to, I wasn't sure what they were here for before. We, I want to let them know, just, you know, when the public's here.
Okay. Did you, you want to reach out?
Yeah, I can just, if it's okay, I'll just go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ben's not going to be involved.
Okay. Mr. Newton, do you have anything?
Um, yeah.
I'm sorry. Let me get with the assistant managers. Did you have anything?
No, sir, we're good. Just getting ready for the storm.
Okay, now, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just very briefly, I want to thank Representative Carson Smith for his assistance this week. We, in conjunction with the Board of Education, and trying to facilitate them obtaining mobile devices to send home with children as an, as an option. They are precluded from doing so by, by a purchasing guideline that doesn't allow purchase of service. I've been working on that, but thank you, Representative Smith, for helping us.
He's wearing a lot of hats these days, isn't he?
He is, and wearing them well, living good.
We're glad to have you.
I just want to say, I want to thank our personnel in the county. There's hurricane, there are a lot of them working at night and around the clock, and we really appreciate it. We, they just realize how much we depend on our county employees and time like this. I tell them, we encourage them and thank them for what they're doing.
Mr. Attorney, was there anything we need to know about with the...
No, sir, they indicated, I guess they just want to see good government.
Okay.
They're going to see quick government.
Mr. Pivon?
Yes, a couple items. So I guess it's been a week and a half ago, we met with FEMA to discuss what we could do in order to secure more funding for the courthouse and, and, you know, to close down the gap on what we're actually going to have to fund through the county. It was a, it was a little bit of a disappointing meeting in my viewpoint. We had some different players, but a lot of pointing at all kinds of different things, you know, a lot of this doesn't fit, and even though we think we're doing good things, and they admitted to us that we are doing very, very good things, and that they strongly encourage us to continue to, to put the generator in place and take the actions to mitigate future damage, they weren't willing to help us recoup some of those funds. So it was a little bit disappointing. I, I did appreciate Senator Rouser, Congressman Rouser, excuse me, for having Chance in attendance of the meeting. I thought Chad did excellent job. He made some very, very strong points. I challenged the process. I also asked for an escalation process and for an appeal process. They, they kind of chuckled at me, so that didn't make me feel too good and told me how hard that was going to be. But I want us to at least take a look at it. I think we owe that to the taxpayers to at least take a look at it and see what it, what it all requires for us to go that next step, because right now we're just getting a very small amount. In, in fact, we have spent so much time on this, we probably are netting zero. Out of the $200,000 or almost $300,000 that they're giving us, we probably netted zero because we have, we have applied resources and tried to, to maximize our return, our reimbursement, and it's just been very, very... The process should not be that complex. It should not be that complex. When people are in need, and, and we are definitely dealing with something that was an outcome of, of a hurricane, and we are trying to take actions so that future cost won't be mounted upon like they have been for this, for this ordeal, I mean, we're going to spend six or seven million dollars to, to put the courthouse back into functional condition. And some of that is, you know, we're, we're doing some upgrades, but it's, it's just very, very disappointing. So we also had a meeting with Division or Department of Environmental Quality on, I got some emails and some phone calls on some concerns about Old North State sewer system. It's a private-owned sewer system. It services majestic oaks, and it slated to service a couple more developments. There were some issues, and we wanted to talk to Division of Environmental Quality to see what else we could do. I asked Ms. Moser to get involved, and she, she did, and she was in attendance of this meeting. Chad, again, was in attendance at this meeting. And, and I think it was a productive meeting. I think that we learned some things. We kind of understand the division of responsibilities and who really owns what, and I'm not making excuses for the county, but there's very few things that the county can do until it real, it's a reactionary kind of thing. They literally got to spill 1,000 gallons of sewage before, before we can make an environmental or an environmental issue where the health department can get involved. And that's the same thing for the state as far as DEQ. But there have been some actions given to Old North State. They're following through with those supposedly. That's going to improve their ability to deal with some of the things. There are also some communications that need to go out. Evidently, there's items that are being introduced into that system, paper products and other items that are, are not, the, the system can't run through the pumps. It stalls the pumps out, literally clogs the system.
Paint like the wipes.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's several items that it just can't digest, and, and so they're putting in new, three-phase motors, three-phase pumps that should not stall out, should be able to digest that, and, and, and hopefully that'll alleviate the, the near-term problems. There's also some, there was some conversation about long-term problems when these future developments hook up to this, this system that, there were some commitments made to us when they came to us for a special use permit. So we're going to follow through on that. We're going to make sure that they're living up to their end of the bargain, their end of the deal. They're a private business, they're in there to make money, but they still have to be compliant so that they're not negatively impacting the environment or the residents around them. So...
Well, you and I both on the same team that if they don't get it straight and they're in violation, probably got a first and a second to revoke that permit.
Yeah.
Have somebody else come in that does do it.
Well, I got to tell you, if I was the guy that was, that had the video that showed the, the area in front of the house where it was coming up out of the ground, I'd be a little upset, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's coming out of the manhole.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I appreciate you two going to that meeting because we both...
Yeah, we have...
...contacted by, and I thank you for going to that meeting.
Yeah, and we got the feedback back to the residents that expressed the initial concern, so they, they should have full understanding. I'm not saying they're completely happy with everything that was communicated to them, but at the same time, we did, we did make sure that they were responded to and made aware of the outcomes of, of that meeting. So I think it was a good meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, you have any...
I just want to give kudos to all the first responders and from, from fire to EMS to emergency management, they're running light clockwork over there. You know, it's a good thing they have a lot of experience, but at the same time, sometimes I wish we didn't have as much experience as they have, so, but, you know, we're as prepared as we can be, so everybody be safe. I, I won't bring, there's nothing that I, that can't wait until the next meeting that I want to bring up.
We have good leadership over there, so that helps, doesn't it? Hey, I won't, I don't know who to give this to, but the Christmas tree lighting on the courthouse square. I know we're inside the courthouse working. Is there a reason why Bergall can't light their Christmas tree at Christmas time on the courthouse square?
We, I was approached about it, I think, last week, and the discussion was the tree, we're, we're trying to be consistent about, we've, we've been asked by different folks wanting to hold events over there. We've been asked by the movie folks on several occasions. We're trying to be consistent in the messaging. What we said was, provide us with a proposal. The tree can more, I don't think there'd be an issue with the tree, but we just have to be cognizant of that fencing and the control fence, controlled access area around, immediately around that courthouse.
I, I understand that, but I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a problem with letting Bergall light their, light the Christmas tree. This is an event that's been going on...
Right.
...for a lot of years, and if it doesn't affect anything, I, I hope I'm not the only commissioner that would agree that that should be able to happen. We need to have some kind of normal, normalcy in, in our lives these days, and I think...
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
But, Mr. Chairman, one comment. I did have a conversation with some folks locally about things having to do with future structures on the courthouse square and parking around the, but the point that I'm trying to make is, can we have some discussions about banning those large food trucks on the courthouse?
I think we need to, and there's a...
And the reason that I say that is we are spending a ton of money. One of the biggest damaging factors in that courthouse was it flooding in the basement, and we're spending a lot of money to drain that water off, and we've lost our trees because there's, they're not, but anyway, the, the point that I'm trying to...
Keep them on the streets, what you're saying. We don't want to ban them from the square.
There's no reason those food trucks can't sit on the asphalt and...
And you're exactly right, and that's, we're going to have that conversation, okay?
Just want to get everybody on the...
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page with that.
I think we need to have that conversation.
And I got, I know I got another meeting, but, um, one of the things was, they were saying where they need to be able to hook up to the hose. There's food trucks all over the place now that don't have to hook up to local hoses to get it done. I mean, the times have changed. They're in that business, they need to have enough water to clean the stuff while they're there, so...
We need to let them know and make arrangements before time.
Stay on the street. I'm with you.
Okay. Let's work about, let's talk about the Christmas tree thing afterwards. I, I hope we can work something out with them on that.
I hope so, too.
Do you all want to hear an update on the storm from the air directly? Come on up real quick, and that'll finish us off.
I need to excuse.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm ready.
Okay. Take care. Be safe.
I've already run one of y'all off, it was like.
Gold fence, Representative.
I didn't know y'all had problems, Carson. I, you know, I didn't know you and Commissioner Williams had problems.
Good to be here. Just an update?
Just a quick update will be fine.
Okay, just real quick, we are, of course, the, the last forecast package we had was 11:00 AM. We're in a hurricane watch, excuse me, hurricane warning that we were put to in this morning because we're just not sure if it's going to be a hurricane or a tropical storm when it comes on shore. Tropical storm force winds, we expect to start getting here around 8:00 PM. Sometimes they kind of are ahead of time. It might be a little bit later than that, but from what we're telling folks is 8:00 PM, you kind of need to be hunkered down where you're going to be because that's when we could see the, the winds. It's projected to make landfall probably somewhere around 10:00, South Carolina, maybe the South Carolina, North Carolina line. But as far as Pender, we're looking at 11:00 PM to about 3:00 AM will be our worst winds. Middle of the night storm, again, we've had several of those. The worst thing is, I think, especially in a, in a tropical system like this, it may be decaying, is the spinoff tornadoes that you really can't see at night. So it's probably a good night for folks to stay, stay vigilant if they don't have their, their weather radios or the phones. A lot of phones woke everybody up this morning to let us know we were in a hurricane morning, which is a great technology, too.
The center right now is forecast to go across Columbus and Bladen Sampson, which would put us on the not-good side of the storm. And, but again, you know, it, it's expected to be just a seventy-five mile an hour hurricane, right on the verge of a tropical storm, certainly not, even last year, as Dorian went by, it was a ninety mile an hour storm. And, and we, we definitely had worse, but we, we may catch whatever the worst this one has to offer. We may end up just having to catch it. So we've got to be ready for our trees down and some power outages, and, and of course, again, those, those tornadoes. And flash flooding may be an issue. We do not believe river flooding is going to be an issue. I think, matter of fact, the last one I saw before I left, I think they might have even downed our estimated rainfall, maybe in the two to four inch range all the way across the county. They were talking maybe up to six or seven, so that may have come down, too. Storm surge, uh, storm surge, surge watch is out for surging tops of the beach, not the warning. The warning is up to Cape Fear and everything south of there. So, you know, it's, it's not a big cat-three, cat-four hurricane coming at us. It's a, it's a cat-one. It might sting. It might hurt a little bit tonight. We've just got to be aware of what's going on, but when the sun comes up, we'll just kind of assess what we've got. And again, it looks like right now, not have to worry about that long-term flooding, river flooding issue, and that's a blessing in itself.
Yes, it is. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Carson, do, do we know what the, the diameter, diameter, diameter of this storm is from a tropical storm wind perspective?
The tropical storm force winds go out, it's over a hundred miles, I know.
Okay, from the center?
Which is kind of correct from the center. So most of the winds, as you, you know, the beach is going to feel it.
Yep.
And then as it comes inland, it sort of decays because of the trees and everything. So what we're expecting is forty-five to fifty-five mile an hour sustained at its worst. That's, again, that's as of eleven, unless, unless they change anything at the five o'clock forecast. Yeah, it's going to, might blow us around in some places, and, and there'll be some specific spots, I'm sure, where people's, you know, they're going to have some, some issues. But a widespread catastrophic-type storm, we just don't think we're going to have this time.
It's a fast-moving storm, too, isn't it?
It is, thank goodness. That's why the rain's not going to be long.
Last time we had three days of hurricane, you know.
All right.
Thank y'all.
How about a, thank you. We appreciate it. How about a motion to adjourn? Need a second.
Second it.
All those in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.